Good morning to everybody and thanks for attending today's Transitional Committee. We are going to be talking about the local plan, the ten-point local plan, and specifically retrofitting agenda and the climate change element that we desperately need to do as a city. So, being as we started a bit late, it does have the feel of an end-of-term, end-of-school term meeting, being as this is the last of the Transitional Committees and actually it will be the Committees proper as we move over to the new governance system. So, let's get on with the agenda. Welcome and housekeeping. Well, we've just done a bit of the welcome. The housekeeping is we're not expecting any fire alarms, so if they do go off, we'll make an orderly exit and meet outside, I can never remember the muster point, Tudor Square. So hopefully we won't get any disruptions from that. Apologies and absence, Philippa.
Thank you Chair. We have apologies from councillor Neil Gibson, councillor Diane Hurst and councillor Mazza Iqbal.
Thank you. And that covers off pretty much everyone that aren't here today. Exclusions of public and press, item number three. Well, there is no confidential information being brought out today, there is no need to exclude anybody for any things on here. In fact, we welcome any interest that we get from the press and the public on all of our issues. Declarations of interest. Paul?
The director of a retrofitting installation company.
Thank you, Paul. No other conflicts or declarations needed? No, okay. So hopefully you'll be able to bring your knowledge and wisdom to today's meeting, Paul. Thank you. Meeting, minutes of the previous meeting on pages nine to eighteen. I'm not intending to go through them page by page, so I'm looking around the floor now for matters of accuracy. No, everyone, Paul, yeah?
I just, I don't think there's any mention when we discussed what the council's doing about mass training of retrofitters. On page six is where it would happen because that's where the discussion happened.
Page six, which is page fourteen. No, we definitely did discuss... Actually, are you looking at the right document? We're looking at the minutes from the previous one.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the...
That's what I was just thinking. No, these are the minutes from the previous meeting on the local plan.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the report, not the minutes.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. Cheers, Paul. So definitely we can raise that with officers at the appropriate time. I was just looking at page six, I'm thinking I can't remember that being in there. No worries. So we're prepared to accept them as accurate. I think they mostly read okay, apart from my rambling, rambles at the end of that bit. So, okay. Matters arising from those minutes. I've got a couple of things. Alice, do we know if on page ten, five point two point five, well, I guess we can check with Mark Whitworth when he comes in, but was there a response sent to Mrs Carpenter?
Very good question, Chair. Don't know the answer, but yeah, it can be chased up.
Okay. Thanks, Alice. And the other one, we'll have to check with Simon Vincent equally on page eleven, five point three point two, whether Simon provided Miss Ash with a response. So we can find out that for next time. Oh, here's Diane. Hi Diane. And the other point that comes to my mind is on page seventeen and eighteen, six point nine point nine, which is more my rambles about sending a letter to government. Now, very belatedly, I think a draft of the letter that we're intending to send to government has been distributed. I think you may have got a paper copy, but there's that much paper today, it may be hard to locate exactly where it is. Doug's found it. Oh, no, you're quite right. Yeah, it's about home insulation stuff. Yes, I'm getting myself confused today. It is very much the end of the term, isn't it? Okay, so we can move on beyond that one, I think. Oh, no, actually, on page seventeen, eighteen, we said about writing to government, and that's the response that we've got. Oh, no, we haven't got that one, have we? So we need to get that letter authored for government to work with us and come back to us with a sensible head-on. But I think that's ongoing with ministers, isn't it?
Yes, Chair. So actually, there was two, two letters really, isn't there? One was whether you wanted, this was about planning, whether you wanted to follow something up on the local plan. And then the one you're referring to that I just distributed is the minutes that were actually the last meeting that I don't think are in the papers, or are they? Where there was a suggestion from yourself that this committee write to government around working together on actions against climate and what works for the city. So what you've reminded me as well is there's that other letter that you were talking about for the local plan.
Thanks, Alice. Digging me out of the hole that I was digging myself into quite comfortably there. Yeah, so we'll need to make sure that we get something off to government shortly on that one. And which actually brings me on to the other bit, which we might as well take straight away now because I've bumbled into it. The letter from the previous minutes, as Alice said, Barbara has kindly put something together, which she'll read out to you now, in terms of a letter that we were going to write, send on to government, hopefully looking for your signatures on to ask them to work with us on the retrofitting bit. So over to you, Barbara.
Thank you, Mark. This is meant to go to sort of right honourable Greg Hans, MP, Minister for Energy, Clean Growth and Climate Change, with a copy to Alok Sharma, MP, because of his COP26 presidency. I'll read it out for the benefit of listeners. Dear Greg, Sheffield City Council and many other councils have declared a climate emergency. The government has pronounced its determination to take action to reduce our carbon footprint. The poor insulation of England's housing stock is a major contributor to our CO2 emissions, something that the government has acknowledged. Sheffield City Council is taking what measures it can to reduce the energy demand of our housing stock. In common with other local authorities, we find the cost of doing this to be, to the standard needed is huge. The system employed by the government, using a number of different funding streams targeted at its different priorities, take little account of the work that needs to be undertaken by individual councillors, all with their unique mix of housing stock. We know the state of our housing stock and we understand the needs of our residents. These inform how our priorities are set. We want to spend our limited resources on physical improvements to our residents' home environments and their general wellbeing, while reducing our use of fossil fuels and working towards net zero. The government's grants process with its tightly drawn criteria means money and resources must be allocated to pursuing funding streams instead of carrying out much-needed remedial work. Each local authority has its own unique set of factors which help determine the solutions which provide the best value for money in any given situation. When there is a mismatch between the criteria set by government for the funding it is prepared to make available and an authority's criteria for establishing spending priorities on housing, the residents in greatest need are most likely to lose out. We would welcome the government working directly with us to understand what our city's housing stock needs are, as well as the priorities of Sheffield's residents. Grants funding can be too blunt at all with which to tackle one of the most pressing issues of our times. It should not be seen as a lottery. Therefore, we would ask that you take this letter in the spirit with which it is meant. We are elected members of Sheffield City Council, reaching out to central government to work with us in improving the homes of all our citizens. We can learn from each other and help inform others taking this very same journey. Thank you, Mark. And thanks for Mark's amendments to bits and pieces, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Doug?
That's the letter that we've got here, isn't it? How many letters are there going round now? Because there's another one, is there?
So for clarity, there's a letter that'll follow on from the local plan elements that we got through with the recommendations that have gone with that, which is to ask government to work with us on the housing numbers needs and such like. But this one is specifically from, not the last meeting, but the meeting before that when we did the ten-point plan, and we said that we'd write to government. So being as that fits into this agenda today, we brought that one today.
So it makes sense. Can we just circulate both of these letters? We haven't got a few days for approval from the committee. It sounds good maybe.
If I might. That letter has been sent to you via email this morning from me on behalf of the Chair and Deputy. The other letter is not composed, as far as I'm aware.
So do you want to put both of them together, just so we can keep track of them? Or is it just allow a few days just to check over and then hopefully get them sent off? Just so that we can have the full committee approving it?
So what I'm going to propose is that if you want to, I don't know whether you want to take this letter back to your groups. It's one meant, the one that's with you today is more meant for a recommendation from this Transitional Committee. Whether you want to have a group view or not on signing that one. Basically, what we would have liked to see is who wants to add their name to this, because obviously I'm quite happy to send it, as is the Chair, Barbara, equally as the drafter. So what we, what we would like to see is quickly if we can get a consensus on sending that letter. The other letter will definitely follow in due course. We'll have to chase Simon Vincent up on that. Doug?
I mean, I think the letter's fine. I'd be happy to put my name to it too, to say otherwise as well.
Cheers. Chris, did you indicate?
Yes, Chair. I read the letter and listened, and I think it's excellent. And I think, yeah, I'd be happy if my name was on that as well. I think it's, it's, it's really important that we get the message across to local, to national government. Local government is there, it will do its job, but it needs the funding for it. And we can't do it on a shoestring. It's got to be serious and it's got to be serious amounts of money. They waste far more than any local government have ever been accused of. And this is something that really needs doing. And I'm quite happy to support it, Chair.
I've seen, I've seen others nodding from the floor, so shall we add everyone's name to that? There's no need for any caveats added, it's just a case of like, we support this call for government cooperation with us. And a bit of context as well is I'm kind of mindful that core cities in UK 100 have also undertaken similar measures and steps to try and get government to engage better in this forum. So our voice won't be on its own and we will very much be adding our voice to those collective approaches as well. So looking at the floor, if everyone's happy to kind of sign up to that one. Alice, do we, do we actually just do electronic signatures or do we need hand signatures?
I think it would be good protocol to get at least yours and Barbara's hand signatures, but you might like to get everyone's. Or if people can send me an electronic signature, I can add it. I feel protocols sometimes, yeah, hand.
Yeah, if there's one signature from each party represented on the committee, I think that'd be fine. And moving lots of bits, moving a bit of paper around the town hall can take quite a long time.
Yes, it can. Doug?
I mean, if you want, you can add my name as exec member as well, so to speak, sort of council parties then. Just thought, I wonder whether we should route it through the Local Government Association as well, because it's going to affect lots of councils. And I mean, maybe we just say, say, here's a copy of what we sent to government, you know. Yes, anything you can do to amplify it would be helpful.
Excellent suggestion there, Doug. So yes, Barbara, representative of the Lib Dems, you can have your name on it, I'll put my name to it, and Doug, yours, as is only appropriate, because actually it is still the executive, cooperative executive that is the power seat at the moment. So yes, that's excellent. Cheers. Yeah. So yeah, let's, let's sign everyone's name on there and then we can get a couple of... And as you quite rightly said, Martin, moving a piece of paper around the town hall in these times when everyone's working from distance and everything else is not trivial in itself. So excellent.
Sorry, Chair. It was also mentioned to me about the fact that some of the other core city leaders or mayors might actually have done something similar. So it's probably sensible to share it with your core city colleagues, but we can make that happen. I mean, Doug, I think councillor Johnson, you mentioned the LGA and I think it would be sensible to let the other core cities know as well. But that's just a simple thing.
So excellent. I think, yeah, and the more that we show Sheffield's voice on the national stage, the better. So let's, let's do that. Yeah. And the more people listen, the better. So that pretty much covers off the minutes, unless anybody else had any matters arising? No? So shall we move on to the item seven? Actually, just before we go on to that, public questions and petitions. Sorry, sorry, is there any today? There isn't, is there? No. Just checking in case I was having a moment and I'd forgotten about them. But no, there's no public questions or petitions today, so we'll move on to item seven and bring officers in. Doug, are you doing a present, are you introducing this one? Okay, cool. Okay. Okay, good morning, everybody, and thank you for attending today's Transitional Committee. I hope everyone's feeling well. Doug, do you want to briefly introduce the officers?
It probably makes sense if get all the officers to introduce themselves in turn, but I'm just going to introduce them as the exec member and say hand over to the people who've been doing all the work. Tom, do you want to introduce yourself from the team?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Tom Finnegan-Smith. I'm the Head of Strategic Transport Sustainability and Infrastructure. Shall I pass on to Mark?
Thank you. I'm Mark Whitworth. I'm Service Manager for Sustainability and Climate Change.
Sorry, I'm Jill Hurst, I'm the Head of Housing Investment in the Housing and Neighbourage Service.
Laura Chikindale, Sustainability Programme Officer and Teams Lead for Housing.
Thank you, you're very welcome. So over to you guys.
So some slight technical delays this morning with the town hall wifi, but I think we're just about there.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom. Yes, so this is the third and final session of the discussion that we've been having around housing retrofit. So this follows the last session where we heard from four external organisations. We heard from Wayne Bexton from Nottingham City Council, we heard from Mark Atherton from Greater Manchester Combined Authority, Lewis Sharman from People Powered Rettrofit and Chris Bryan, who is a private landlord from Savvy Lettings and Property Management. And a paper has been circulated which identifies seven key themes, which in discussion with the Chair and the Deputy Chair, were identified as some of the key areas we felt, or that were coming from the conversations and the points that were raised in those discussions, as the areas where we felt that there was an opportunity to discuss those in more detail today, with the view of actually leading into recommendations and a further report, which would then come from this committee, from this Transitional Committee, and help to inform potentially the work when we move into the committee system and inform the output of some of that work. And I think that's how we've reflected that. So I'll just stop there just for a second, just to check that that's in terms of our understanding of the work and we've reflected that correctly.
Yeah, I'm looking around, we've got mostly nods of consent, so I think that is, that is a fair reflection and summation of where we're at. Yeah?
Okay, so I'll quickly just run through those, those seven points. I think we probably, there's quite a few to cover in the discussion. But I think probably the first two, the first two are probably areas where we felt that there's some scope to explore today and hopefully there's time to look at those remaining five as well. But the first one was about clarifying approach to funding to enable officers to maximise the benefit of available resources and to have bids effectively prepared. Because I think that when often these funding calls come around, they're very short notice. And I think that one of the things that we recognise from the discussions that we had last, earlier, the second session, was that the resource that Nottingham and the capability that they had in terms of accessing some of that funding was clearly there in terms of the ability to respond to those funding calls and maximise, maximise those opportunities. The second point was about the collaborative approach and about how we've, again, one of the key messages both from Manchester and from Nottingham was actually how important that regional approach was in securing funding and actually then using the increased procurement and the buying and the opportunity to maximise those bids and actually maximise some of the wider benefits as well, like skills. One of the third points is around addressing the cost benefit and that being critical for the private rented tenure. And obviously the points that were made by Chris Bryan around some of the challenges that are faced by private landlords. And actually how we have the right tools to support action, engage landlords to participate in retrofit is going to be critical. On the other side of that, in terms of actually how we engage with residents is going to be important. So point four is about how we engage to test generic assumptions and look at some of the barriers and the willingness of people to engage and to work with us and obviously how we, how we maximise some of that. Again, reflecting on some of the points that were made by speakers, such as the points that came forward from People Powered Rettrofit and how they're working with residents and communities in Manchester. There's the work that Jill is involved in very closely around the understanding, the council property archetype, but again, sort of understanding more detail around our archetype across the city, the different types of properties and the challenges that, that challenges that they present to us. The sixth point is about targeting ready-to-act, the ready-to-act, so people who are ready to move on this through an informed homeowner offer. So again, thinking about some of the opportunities that both Greater Manchester identified around the sort of the people who were the able-to-pays and in a sense identifying a market there and saying that that could help develop some of the supply chain. But also, again, sort of picking up the conversation, the points that were made by the third speaker that we had on the People Powered Rettrofit and the service that they were providing to residents in the Manchester area as well. And then the final point is on building skills and the supply chain and how that's crucial to enable delivery at scale, because clearly this is all about accelerating, about increasing the scale across the city, but also thinking that as a sort of a regional and a national challenge. But also how we do that at an affordable price and that we have a role in procuring housing works and setting regulatory standards and also in supporting the development of skills. So that captures hopefully those seven points. And I think really then it's, it's over to the committee to start exploring those. Obviously, we've got the summaries of the presentations which are circulated with the papers. And then I think if there are any sort of points of clarification or other steers, then obviously we're responding to questions, then we're able to do that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Yes, so I think the evidence that we have got has been really helpful and it is good to see Sheffield actually exercising, flexing its muscles and bringing other people in. Now, I know from previously before we brought you officers in for this discussion, I know that Paul mentioned a point on the report that you wanted to pick on, which is particularly salient, actual point seven, the final one Mark just mentioned. So I'll bring Paul in at this stage, if that's okay, Paul?
Thank you. I just noted that the, the points I raised about what Sheffield is already doing about mass training for retrofitting and such, that is not really mentioned in the report. It's quite nice to have something in there about that. And, and you know, and work is still ongoing, there's a lot, there's a lot happening. And we're, we're learning about new obstacles every week.
Thank you. I was just going to say that that's a really valid point. It's covered in the minutes from the first session. It's not covered in the report from the specific evidence hearing session. But we are going to produce a final report that covers all three of the sessions that we've had. So I'll ensure that it's incorporated into that fully.
Thank you, Paul. Doug, you wanted to comment there?
Yeah, so just thinking, in terms of priorities about where we will put our efforts to make something happen sooner rather than later and then, so it's about this idea of what was continue, improve and accelerate activity. I mean, it seems to be that, you know, if you look at the different sectors of our own housing stock, the wider social housing, owner occupied and then private rented, it's all that increasing order of complexity. So I mean, it's quite clear from Chris Bryan's evidence last time, that, you know, once you deal with the private sector landlords, that there's, you know, there's additional complications in that that we simply don't have when we're dealing with our own stock, which officers know well. There's a, you know, great deal of, you know, conformative archetypes and things like that. So in terms of getting it going, I would say that the work that's being done internally in effect with our own stock is a really good way to get things moving. Because the one thing that will bring owner occupiers and others on board is when they see actual houses being retrofitted and the reactions from tenants who've got a better standard of living. And that's the point about accelerating activity. So I suppose I'm suggesting, in terms of priorities, let's start with the ones that we've got where there are fewer complications and just more direct controls.
Thank you, Doug. And certainly I agree with you, the envious eyes of people looking on other people's house improvements are a great motivating theme. Mark, do you need to come back on that? Are you just happy to note that suggestion?
Yeah, no, happy to note that. And if Jill might want to just respond on that, our housing stocks.
Yeah, I think it's a really good point. I mean, I think number four on the list, which is around engagement with residents, is a really, really important one. And just from a very practical perspective, currently at the moment, the LAD scheme that we've got some grant funding for, we're only getting buy-in of 50% and those are with the tenants that we have control, influence, more responsibility for. And that certainly came up in our discussion, I think, yesterday, didn't it, when we were in an officer meeting about the progress with that project? That we need to put more effort into that customer engagement to really sell the benefits, but also remove some of the barriers. And some of them are very simple barriers. Some of them are about clearing their lofts out, but, you know, and supporting them to get there. So I would, I very much would like to see the customer engagement activity really get moving as well. Because I think we get that engagement and we understand those problems, a bit, a bit like we did with the landlord. It was really eye-opening, that discussion from the landlord. But it did make us all think and I think we don't need to do some more work with customers to, to understand what... But it did make us all think and I think we don't need to do some more work with customers to understand what we can do to help them move. Even if it's incrementally, but move with this. So we will be sorting, trying to sort our own house out, I want to reassure you. That was, that opened my eyes. Because on things like decent homes, we always knew we would have some reluctance, but it wasn't 50%. So we've got a lot, we've got some work to do there still.
Thank you Jill. Doug?
Sorry, I don't think that's actually really interesting Jill, I didn't notice as many as 50% of people are sort of not, indicating not interested. I just wonder if there's any more detail on that. And I know you've just said some of that now. I'm trying to work out whether people are really saying that they don't want any involvement with it because it's new and different and you know implicitly they're saying that they would rather stay in a colder home that's more expensive to heat than have an upgrade that would be some hassle. Or whether it is like the other barriers, like you say, like sort of the practical ability to clear a loft or any other obligations. And I don't know if you've actually got answers now or if there's a sort of...
Well, I was just saying, I still think there's a bit of a Covid factor about people wanting people in their homes. So there's still that reluctance. So what we gave, what we said yesterday was we would go away and look at the detailed reasons that have been given by people and then we can come up with the total problems and the solutions and how much is Covid related. Hopefully that will start to dissipate, but I do think this is practical help, but also some more better information. I think we need to give them more information about the benefits as you say.
So actually Jill, yeah, really important points. I mean, if it is Covid then hopefully that will change fairly rapidly in the near future. But if it's this sort of general reluctance about people not knowing what they're going into, which is perfectly understandable, then that perhaps goes back to the sort of point one of the key themes. If we're going to make this whole process start, then actually we perhaps do need that extra resource given to you for your teams to be able to engage much more intensively with tenants, to kind of reassure them. Because if we don't, if we can't even do it with our own tenants in a workable way, it's just never going to get the snowball starting to roll really. So yeah, that's I think a really useful thing. I suppose what would be useful is, yeah, if you can let us know at some point what the outcome of that, will you bring all the responses together and just see what the themes work out as against useful point?
Yeah, and I think what we need to do is bring in the private sector sign-ups that we've had and what the, maybe some of those conversations that we've had, the private sector as well as the public sector. Because the LAD scheme's got two strands to it, as you know, the council tenants. So yes, we will bring that together.
Thank you Jill. Anadotedly, one of the issues that I've heard repeatedly, even from having my own cavity walls insulated, is people seem to believe that housing of a certain age doesn't particularly benefit from cavity wall insulation. So, and this is point of the things that we all picked up on very early on in one of those earlier meetings and was reflected by both Manchester and Nottingham councils, is that the earlier the conversations start, the better the information is and the better informed decisions our citizens can take because there is a lot of nonsense out there. So I do think in terms of steps going forward, and I know we've been on the back foot with having conversations with the public because of Covid, I think now is as good a time as any to start moving forward on that. Yeah Jill?
Just going to say that there are linkages, there always are with these things, particularly about on these ones. So yesterday I met with the consultants at Supporting Bays on the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund to talk to them about why our second bid hadn't been successful. And part of the reason was we've not put enough detail in around customer engagement. Now, so we can fix that, we can fix that. But again, it links, the challenge is then, is that lack of visibility sometimes with this grant funding environment, getting things ready, and it links back to the first point, having things ready, having started all of that, knowing that that opportunity, when the opportunity comes. So there's a risk of going out and talking to people if nothing materialises because we really don't, we don't have making empty promises. But it definitely needs, it's definitely going to, it sounds like it's definitely going to help us with our grant bids as well. So kill two birds with one stone, I think.
Excellent, thanks Jill. And we're putting out a letter as well, which you may or may not have seen, asking the government to rethink how it engages with local councils such as Sheffield. Now I've got Paul wanting to come in and then I've got Martin as well, so I'll bring Paul in at this stage.
Thanks Mark. Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is absolutely something that we can't get wrong. And you know, when did the discussions about tackling the climate change begin? Well, Adam Smith did in the 1700s. I've kept a general studies A level paper from when I was at sixth form from 91 or something, and it's got a question about climate change. And you know, and to delay action on climate change is to deny climate change. So we absolutely cannot let action be delayed any further. You know, we've got such a tight deadline now that is, it's, you know, it's almost going to be impossible to meet, but it's impossible for us to miss it. And so yeah, however that's achieved, you know, those houses, those 50% of people who are rejecting the work, those houses need doing one way or another. Thanks.
Thanks Paul. More an observation than a question there, but excellent. So Martin, Tim and then Chris.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Thank you for the reports and organising the evidence sessions that we've had so far. I just want to go back to something I raised at the very first meeting because I think there's a gap in the analysis and the evidence we've got, we've got lots of evidence. But, and that relates to the the strategic plan, the strategic objectives, what we're trying to achieve here. And that is, you know, funding is going to be limited. However much funding we get, it won't be enough. And whether we want to go broad with retrofit or deep. And by that I mean, I mean, we saw some fantastic examples, particularly from Nottingham, of where a relatively small number of houses had huge improvements made to them and an immense reduction in energy bills and carbon footprint. And is it better to do that? Or is it better to have a smaller improvement to a larger number of houses that would benefit financially and environmentally more people? And which of those two approaches within the financial envelope would deliver the biggest and quickest environmental improvement for the city? And we've seen some great evidence, but I haven't seen that analysis yet in terms of what our strategic plan is. It's possible I've missed it, but I'd just welcome your views on that. Thank you.
Thank you Martin. Tim Laura, is that something you're able to address in a moment?
And just initially in terms of the balance between broad and deep. So we're not going to be able to reach our net zero targets without doing a balance of the two. So housing or working with RLB to create a roadmap for the council housing, which will then inform what that strategy will be in terms of the balance between the broad, which is a lot of houses with less interventions versus the deep with fewer houses with more interventions. And so I believe that that is Q3, is that right Jill? So that's going to be due in Q3 and that will give us the analysis that will inform that strategy. So I hope that that, so there is work that is being taken to address the absence of that strategy and the absence of that analysis. And it's going to be due in Q3.
So on that one Laura, RLB and when is Q3?
Sorry, Q3 is the...
Just to clarify.
Yeah, thank you Jill.
And so, so RLB are council's third party consultants now, so Wreckit and Everton Book and all, I think they're called. Previously we used to use Turner Townsend. So they've been commissioned, what we're aiming to do is to get the results of that in July. So that's the initial results. Then there's the piece of work to do to then look at that, what that is telling us and how does that fit in with our maintenance plan. So if you remember the second session, one of the things Nottingham were particularly said really worked for them was to try and align your retrofit plans with your maintenance plans. So when we get that information, well that's when we'll start to do the maintenance plan. I think the reference to quarter three is what we're trying to do is line all this information so that when we start doing our annual investment planning process, which we normally do in quarter three, is that we've got all the information to be able to inform the sort of the plans for the social housing. I think what wasn't just mentioned is there is this separate piece of work that Georgina is going to be leading on, which is to look at the private sector side. Because when we talk about a strategy, you can have strategies for the public sector housing, but that's only two thirds of the city. In terms of where can you make the most impact, nearly everybody I speak to says you probably make most impact in the private sector. Because that's where you've got some of the worst performing housing stocks in terms of the benefit. So I do think that we've got to look at these things together. So the absence perhaps of a city plan is maybe, it's not something I'm particularly leading on, but I don't know whether there is a plan for that in terms of to bring those three, those three bits of the different tenure mixes together or...
Yeah, so just on that, the, one of the things that is included in the ten point plan which is going to go up exec next week is the next step of that is working around, as Jill says, bringing those different elements together. So looking to create a housing decarbonisation roadmap that sets out how each of those parts contribute towards that greater ambition of actually becoming net zero by 2030. Obviously that's going to be informed by the work that's been undertaken within the housing service, but also taking account of some of the other conversations and the other plans that are taking place with other providers in the city, whether that's some of our other registered provider, social landlords and also other initiatives as well that we're aware of or that we want to make sure are included in that. Picking up the point that this isn't just about our own housing stock, it's also about what we're doing and how others in the city are also looking to try and improve the condition of their homes.
Martin, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, I look forward to seeing that analysis, sorry, that's gross assumption. I look forward to whoever is on the committee getting that information in July. Something I didn't mention was that there's also kind of a moral dilemma in there. So with the way fuel prices are going, the number of people in fuel poverty, it's about, do you want to give a bigger benefit to a smaller number of people, financial benefit? Or a smaller benefit to a wider number of people? And that's a really important question that needs to be discussed and agreed. Thank you.
Tom and then Doug, what? Tom, did you want to come in there?
Just briefly, just to say that I fully agree. I think in terms of that kind of cost benefit analysis, it depends on the criteria that you're kind of defining the benefits from. So part of the discussion today, part of the work moving forward will need to kind of influence and define kind of how we capture some of those issues around benefit. Clearly in terms of kind of the carbon reduction outcomes of investment choices, those can be modelled and measured and theoretical analysis of, again, a budget investment, what could you do with different scenarios of investment to achieve carbon reduction? And in terms of achieving net zero, fundamentally you need to go broad and deep on everything. It depends on the kind of limitations and constraints on those analyses that you're going to be undertaking. Obviously budget is likely to be and will be a constraint, whether that's work within an annual year or over a period of time. So those wider benefits, how we want to capture those and consider those in terms of any investment choice that the council will need to make either on direct investment or influencing a market, whether it's, you know, part of that kind of, that kind of, that line between kind of direct investment on our own kind of assets through to kind of influencing kind of private sector, private rented or influencing, you know, homeowner choice. There are different points in terms of kind of what we will do, how we will take those choices. So it is work that will need to come through and be considered as part of that roadmap. But there are those wider issues that will need to be captured and that those are policy choices effectively.
Thank you Tom. Doug, did you want to add something to that briefly?
Well, yes, I mean, to some extent the question won't arise because on the face of it, it's, you know, a perfectly sensible question. The sort of balancing that you have to do across any form of local authority governance. But I think it also depends on the source of the resources that go into retrofitting. And of course, we want to see both broad and deep retrofit taking place. But if you think about, this would arise, the question that you posed Martin, would arise if say we were just going to do, you know, retrofitting of housing out of say capital budgets of help by the local authority, we're just going to spend once or out of, you know, purely out of the revenue funds for maintenance. But of course we're not. I mean, if we have funding from government down to the LAD scheme, then it's government that sets the criteria as to which houses and to what extent. So the question simply doesn't arise and we should certainly take all the money that the government's going to provide for that and I mean, we will do, I'm sure. But if you look at things like the energy sprung approach, which is what Wayne Bexton Nottingham was talking about, again, the issue doesn't arise because essentially that's self-funding. And this is where the work to be done is working out the detail of the financial modelling, which surely does work and being in with those other local authorities that are doing that work and getting all the support that's available to do it. I mean, this is pioneering stuff, but the point is this is the transformative stuff that means that we can do deep retrofit on as wide a scale as possible because it effectively, because it's self-financing, it removes the need to identify pools of money that you spend once. It brings money back into the system. So it means that the ability to get capital isn't a constraint on that because its capital will be serviced by the terms of the scheme. So the constraints on that are going to be the officer resource in all the work around tenant engagement and actually rolling out the scheme. And then the other constraint will be on the supply chain, the labour force and, you know, actually physically getting the work done. But if you can get that factored in, then, you know, there isn't a limit to how many houses you can do. And so we have to set the ambition of doing the whole city. And that's the point about, and that's why it's fundamentally different from, you know, the schemes we've always had in the past. So it's about taking us on a completely different trajectory. So in other words, the question that you pose only arises within the context of the fairly limited ambition and ability that we've had in previous years. But if you step outside that and think bigger, it actually removes the question out of the equation, which is at least encouraging.
Thank you Doug.
Not sure I agree with that Chair. I like the reply from officers in terms of the analysis, but it's a discussion or a debate to be had in July.
And one thing I would say, and I'm sure Doug's not doing this, he's not suggesting that the rent money of the council tenants is used to insulate the properties of private landlords. Although that is obviously the issue there and I think that would be a concern for some people watching at this moment, should that be misconstrued.
Yep, that's quite correct. Yeah, we're talking about money within each sector, staying within each sector. And that of course is why we, the levers within our own local authority housing are much simpler than the levers of bringing in private landlords. And just what I'm saying, we should start with ours because it's about how we get something rolling and then just continue the rollout as we bring more people in because they'll see it's successful.
Thank you Doug. So I'm not sure it's particularly an issue there that officers need to address. So we've got, on the list we've got Tim, Chris and Barbara. But very briefly, there's some elements that Martin touched on there that I'm hoping not putting words in Martin's mouth, but I think would be helpful for next year. And that is a rag rating of capacity because what we're hearing here is that we're not doing clocks and dominos where we'll do one thing, wait for that one to fall and then do the next thing. We're going to do multiple approaches, which is something I'm happy to see happen and delighted to see happen. However, as Doug mentioned earlier, your team hasn't got the greatest amount of finance and resources behind it to deliver this work. There are multiple sectors, not one size will fit all, there are multiple things that do need to be done. So I think at some stage, I'm not sure whether that's something that RLB are currently doing Jill and Mark, but at some stage we would, we, I'm doing the Martin bit here, the next... committed that's following on from this, whoever that may be, would be helpful if they were to have sight of a rag rating of the capacity of officers to deliver these work streams. I don't want us to be like, too much butter spread too thinly on bread, to quote The Hobbit. Yeah, I'm an analytical, not just Star Wars, but other things. Yeah, I don't want us to be in the position that we're spread so thinly across so many things that we don't deliver on any of those things. So I think that that would be an action point that we'd like to see taken forward, if possible. Martin? Yeah, okay, thank you. Tim, thank you for your patience, and then we've got Chris and Barbara, I'll bring Tim in there, thank you.
That's, that's fine. One of the things is, is the capacity building that Paul Turpin's talked about, and together with the fact that in effect, if we are to have the capacity for, for doing some of the retrofitting through the energy strong approach, we are going to be effectively, though properties might move, is mortgaging some of our properties in order to pay for it in advance, because we'll be recouping that money over a period of 30 years, I believe. So, so that's, that's part of where this council's going to have to look at. But one of the things, one question, first question I want to ask is, how confident are you, given the performance of our housing repair service, that you're going to be able to synergise, in effect, the retrofitting and the maintenance of our housing style? How confident are you that's, that's going to happen with any great efficiency? Because anything I've seen over the last few years, I'm, I'm struggling with that one.
I think that's one possibly for you, Jill.
Okay, I, I think that there's a lot of retraining needs to be done across the whole construction sector. So I don't want to say that our repair service are any worse than any other parts of the construction sector. So if we move into new technologies, there's going to need to be a lot of, a lot of investment and retraining in those. So I'd be interested in the, to see where we are, where we're going in terms of the skill set for our own people. I think that links a little bit with the rag rating stuff, actually. So it's not just about, it's not about just bums on seats, it's about the technical understanding of the landscape that we're going into and how we need to sort of invest in that. So, you know, I think there are aspects of the repair service at the moment, they're not, are definitely not where we want them to be in terms of day-to-day performance, but they are very keen to come with us on that journey in terms of learning about new technologies. We've been with them recently to look at their source heat pumps at their failure premises down in Belpa, they've retrained people up there. Small stuff at the moment, we need to get bigger, and there's a big workforce to do some retraining on. But I don't think that the current size of the repair service at the moment, we wouldn't be relying on them to do this retrofit work per se. We will, unless we expand that service, needs to use the whole construction sector to support us. So, but I think that's a challenge nationally to get, get construction organisations to meet some of the standards that governments are looking for in terms of past 2013, past 2035. So this is a, this is a national problem that we need to work with whatever organisations are out there to support us, to get all of our technical staff and trade staff to the level that we need to be for the future.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm over the optimist, and I think that we will have the ability to quite, it may start slowly in the first couple of years, but it could, if we, but it could be an exponential expansion. The next thing I'm asking is, we keep banding about this word landlords, and, you know, in my ward, I've got a, I've got a, you know, in effect, a housing association, Johnny Johnson, who have quite a number of properties, I think it's 60, 70 in one go, and they're a housing association. So they're a different type of landlord, in effect, than, than some other landlords we're talking about. And so what we've got to make sure is that, you know, they've got properties round, round the region, around the country, and we've got to make sure that we're talking to those sorts of organisations to find out what they're doing and what their findings work in best. Because when we band in this word landlord, we're talking about some private sector individuals who've got, you know, the guy that we're speaking to us last month, who's got quite a number of properties, will have their housing associations as well, and then we've got people who just by chance, whatever, have got a single property, who are probably going to be further down the list, but we need to provide them with information on how they could retrofit the one property that they have as a, you know, that they have, that they're renting out for what, for whatever reason. But the people, if we're talking about the, you know, the low hanging fruit, are the, first of all, I'd say in priority are the housing associations that are within Sheffield, and then the larger private sector landlords, I would say, that we've got to look at if we're moving on. And we've, and it's how are we going to, first of all, work with the housing association to make sure that they're doing, because quite often they have small schemes that are mixing in with, you know, our own stock, so that they'll be a lot easier. And then we've got to talk about, and how are we going to deal with those, first of all, because they may suddenly, much to our surprise, be doing some retrofit in their own, that we haven't, we don't know of. And then we've, you know, and, and we may have been able to piggyback on some of that to reduce costs or whatever, and while the people are there. So how, how are we, how are we doing, how are we going to be working that?
I'll just give you a couple of examples of things that have certainly crossed my path in the last six to nine months. We had, we, we have a strategic housing forum that we invite all the registered social landlords, housing associations to. So we meet once a month, and it's usually a topic-based discussion. So I think it's about six, seven months ago that we had one on climate change, didn't we? And what, what they, and they, pretty much all of them did a short presentation about what their, what their strategies are, what their, what their plans and commitments are. And we probably need to follow that up now, because at, at the time, I think many of them were doing what we're doing, they were on the start of the journey of the roadmap, and what's the conclusion that they now reached. So that's, that would definitely be, I think, one to sort of follow up on. More recently, the, the local authority delivery grant submissions that, for round two that came up, the local authorities were deemed the lead partners for those, if you put in a bidding. And so regionally, if Sheffield housing associations wanted to bid for some of that grant funding, they needed to work with the local authority on that. So we did reach out to them several times during that sort of bidding cycle process to establish whether they wanted to be part of the bid. We had about two or three that were really close to committing, that they wanted to be included. But what we are finding is that quite a lot of these housing associations now are looking to their, I'll call it, their national boards. They're looking to their national boards for the steer on what the board commitment is to the sort of retrofit. So this isn't about local, whilst there are some local housing associations, we need to do things differently, we need to be flexible, they are looking for the steer from their national boards as to what their strategies are going, are going to be. So in the end, then, none of them, none of them put any bids in for, in terms of the Sheffield one. And I think what they're doing at the moment, more through the sort of national federation housing associations, is they're lobbying government and saying, our business plans don't work if you, if you're saying we've got to do net zero, we will make choices between whether it's net zero or new build. So they're doing a huge amount of lobbying to try and influence the sort of grant regimes and financial environments. But I, I think it locally probably needs to be a persistent conversation, but I also think if the, if the city has a strategy, a clearer strategy, then it's, we'll understand better the participation that they can make in that. We set our ambitions out more clearly, we will then, you know, want to work and to push them to that. South Yorkshire, were working with us on, on the grant funding for local area delivery phase one, round one, and then their board pulled the money. So the scheme didn't, didn't proceed, and that would have been a really, that was one for ourselves, that I think we would have gotten an awful lot of learning from, because it would have been your traditional terraced, solid walled home that we've got, you know, hundreds, hundreds of within the city. But in the end, there's, it was a financial decision, I think, for them, that they, they didn't think that they could commit to it. So we need to keep working with them, but they, but there are these external factors that will influence what their board decisions are and what their individual asset plans are going to be.
One of the things I was going to say is that the strategy, moving from strategy to actual implementation is going to be the big thing with, especially with these housing associations, because from working, well, working with them, working, working with residents over 20 plus years, my, I've never had a brilliant experience with housing associations because they're always defending their, their profit, property portfolio. And sometime, that will probably need something from government to change some of their thinking with that. Because one of the things when we talk about 50% of people not wanting to, not want to have, you know, they're not, not interested in retrofitting, et cetera, at the moment, is the fact is, it's going to be a bit like the utility companies, isn't it, where, you know, the gas board comes and digs up the road, and then they fill it in, and then the electricity board turns up and they fill it in. And so they could be on an, in a, an area where forever, there are works going on, and a lot of people, you know, like their, their estate, their area to be, to be, you know, not to be under some constant building site. That's, that's the thing. And that's why we've got to, you know, I, I, you know, I presume some of it's going to be like banging your head against a brick wall with these, some of the housing associations, trying to get them to commit to anything from national, their national headquarters, wherever they, wherever they are sitting. So I don't envy you, I think it's going to be a tough task, but it's also going to need some government, government guidance on, on how they operate, because, you know, what they're always looking at is their bottom line and, and how they, so, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Tim. Doug, I'll bring you in briefly there. Actually, I'm quite disappointed that the others, and maybe we're guilty of it as well, the waiting that's been given to retrofitting of housing needs to be rethought is an observation I'm thinking of. And for many, many years, we've been looking to the gas supplies coming from Russia, and it's been brought into stark relief because of what's going on with Ukraine at the moment and the sanctions that, we are living off a past model, and we're not retrofitting our houses and making them as efficient as we should have for many, many years. The blame sits lots of places, but I do think we do need to look at those economic factors and the, and the waitings behind those decisions that we're making as we go along. Not just us, but we need to actually be sharing that information with others, because it's really disappointing that they decided economically it didn't stack up for them. That would seem like a wrong decision at this stage. Doug, yeah?
I agree with that last point, Mark, yeah. I was just going to say, and I think we actually have got some hope in Sheffield. So off the larger housing associations, Sanctuary has already been involved with the, was it the retrofit accelerator housing something programme? The one that go, is, is the collaboration of different authorities and social landlords in the energy strong approach, and it's what Wayne Beck's was talking about last time. So Sanctuary is definitely in there, but, but not the Sheffield estates. I mean, it might actually be down in Devon. But the point is that there are people in Sanctuary who've already embarked on this, so they're well ahead of us. And, and of course, we tend to think that, yeah, Sheffield City Council is the biggest landlord in the city. But actually, of course, some of the housing associates, when you pull their stuff, you know, places for people, Sanctuary, they've got a lot of properties in the country. So they, they were actually big players in this. But Sanctuary is ideal for us, because if you look at Shire Green, where the whole estate was stock transferred, but Shire Green's characterised by really very few archetypes of housing, those ones where they're kind of ideal for the full-scale retrofit, those sort of 1930s style semis, and also where you've got, you know, still got areas of quite widespread poverty. And, and I think the thing we haven't mentioned yet, which we should always go back to, is that the, the approach, the sort of energy strong approach, but something about the sort of aiming big is fundamentally about social justice, because it's always about tackling the, you know, not the, the easy homeowners who've got their own money to invest if they're just given the right nudges, but about transforming the lives of people in poverty and making sure that everyone's got, you know, good standard of housing. So actually, Sanctuary in Shire Green, if you look at that estate, that's an ideal partner for us to have on board there. And you can probably tell us, Jill, Sanctuary's got other large estates over on the east side of the city, which I can never remember, but just the, the Shire Green estate just struck me as an ideal location to be getting some of this going. So I think we've got a real opportunity there.
Thank you, Doug. So Chris, because, Mark, did you want to come in on that briefly?
I was just going to add that there are, as has been outlined, there are some really good examples of where we, you know, where there are opportunities for us to work with, with those other partners in the city. And just to add that we are, we're aware that there's also a conversation with South Yorkshire Housing around some of their work, that they're looking at similar programmes. So I think there's, again, the opportunity to use the Strategic Landlord Forum, to have that conversation with, with partners there, to see what they're doing and actually be using that as a, as a way to try and, as Jill said, setting our ambition out, which was the purpose of that, that meeting six months ago, is to say, this is what the council's aiming to do, how can we all contribute towards that? I think it's got to be a big, a big part of this.
Thank you, Mark. Chris, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Chair. A lot of points have been covered. I will say one thing that I think we, the lesson learned when we did the decent home standard is we, again, we missed the opportunity to do certain things that we could have, that we're now looking at to do in relation to energy efficiency. But one of the other things that we, we allowed our own tenants to make a decision whether they had work done on the houses. The vast majority did, but there was a number of people who said, oh, we don't want our houses touched, we like our houses as it is, our home as it is, which is fair enough, it's their home, but it's our property, and we weren't thinking about the people that came after them. So there are still houses, and there's one or two that were never touched through the decent homes, and the money went, and all the, they're now coming to the point where they're so far behind the rest of the city, it's unreal. And I think that, that then causes us a backlog, that if we've got money to do our stock, we say to the tenants, we will work with you, but this work must be done, not just for you, but for the future people that are coming in here, for your children and their children's children, because of this climate emergency. And, and to put it as starkly as that, this is our property, it's your home, it's our property, but it must be done. And I think that we, we work with them as strongly as possible, but we, we don't say, oh, fair enough, we don't want it done, it don't get done, it must be done.
Thank you, Chris. I think you raise a really interesting point that I've not actually really taken into account, that, that, one, we don't want the retrofitting dystopian landscape that Tim's mentioned of repeat, works ongoing, but also balancing that off against allowing tenants to paint their front doors a different colour than it used to be, because we didn't used to allow people to have their front doors a different colour. But I'd not actually thought about the element that we do have a responsibility as landlords to simply say, we will do this work on your house. Jill, one for you, I suspect.
Yeah, I was going to say, and if it becomes a compliance matter, so you, that, you know, a social landlord cannot elect a property without it being at a certain level of energy performance, that, that is where we are, there's going to be some tension between, obviously, the current residents who are saying no. So, you know, we have all sorts of compliance stuff that we have to do now, you know, gas and electric and stuff, and we're pretty successful in that. But we do sometimes have to be very, as, as the council said, it's quite, sometimes quite a stark and a hard line that it appears that offices are taking, but it's because there's a, there's a legal obligation upon us to do that. So it will be interesting to see where the government goes with that in terms of that sort of your minimum standards, because they certainly do, as we heard at the session where the private landlords, there are, you know, there are minimum standards that they're ex, they're expected to adhere to. So if that becomes more of a compliance matter, then, then it, it will always win some people over, I, I think. But obviously, we, we don't want to be a landlord who's not complying, we want to be a landlord, a good landlord who, who does comply.
Thanks, Jill. Doug? Yeah, come on, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, I got people coming to me saying, oh, we don't want this, we don't, I'm too old, I don't want it doing, can you get on to them, sorry? And I actually went to see them and had to persuade them that it was worth doing. And there was only one person, he was, he was a bit cantankerous, he was a lovely chap, but he can be a bit cantankerous, who refused right the way through. They carried him out in a box at the end of the day, and we got the property done that way, which is a sad way of doing it, when he could have had two years in that house. had two years in that house in good condition.
We weren't responsible for him being in that box.
We weren't responsible for him being in the box, but if he'd allowed us to do it, he would have had the last few years in his house. Would have been a bit of disturbance, but the last few years in his house would have been lovely. And it was sad that he, at the end of the day, and that house then took another 18 months before it was redone, because they were that far behind, they moved on. So, yeah, it's something, the compliance issue, I think it's something we must push.
Thanks, Chris. Doug, I'll bring you in for comment. We've got Barbara and Diane Indicater to ask questions. So, Doug?
Yeah, so just briefly, I mean, in reality, we know it's difficult to absolutely enforce, you know, improvements on a tenant who's unwilling. And, you know, it's not a good position for us to be in, but it is really the key to the engagement stuff that you were talking about earlier on, Jill. But I was just going to flag up, so first of all, it's a reason really to get the first schemes going as soon as we possibly can, because it's when people see what their neighbours have done, what different houses have done, that's when people say, yeah, I want some of that, it's not so bad after all, that sort of thing. The second thing was that, I just wanted to relay, this was an account from what the site manager of one of the energy sprung retrofits in Nottingham, they were actually working on site, but they were talking about, you know, the extra difficulties that's come when, you know, there's one house out of a row that's where the scheme's not going ahead. But there was a particular tenant there, so a council tenant, that absolutely refused to have the improvements done, so they didn't want it. And they had, you know, either refused to sign the agreement to go ahead, to sign up to it, or they'd actually signed the waiver that said that they didn't want it. Anyway, they'd signed in writing to say that they didn't want it in one way or another. And of course, the work went ahead. And when they saw what had happened to all their neighbours, once they were living in these nice, warm, comfortable homes, she put a complaint into the council about the fact that she was being left behind in a cold house. You know, and it's, you know, a ridiculous story, but it actually does demonstrate, when people see what's being done, that's what changes people's minds, you know. So, yeah, and that's it. And, yeah, I think the lesson for today from what Jill's saying is, we've got to recognise there are still a lot of people who were just in that sort of naturally resistant phase. So we do need some resource into thinking about that.
Thank you, Doug. I'll bring in Barbara and then Diane.
Thank you, Chair. There are so many points I want to raise, and I'll try to be coherent about it. I mean, Douglas, you're pushing energy sprung as if it's a silver bullet, and it's not. You know, we know it will work very well with certain housing archetypes, but not a lot of them. We know it's expensive, we know there's been issues with it. But it does raise other issues. I mean, first of all, the guarantee is 30 years. Does that mean that sort of any home that's actually built, retrofitted to that standard cannot be altered for 30 years? Because tenants tend to want to do alterations inside and outside, which might affect it. That's a minor issue. But you're implying that the budgeting for that would be very, very straightforward, that the setup, you know, setup costs and all the rest of it, and the housing budget would be allowed to be used to actually set up a financial system to make itself funding in the future. That brings me to, I mean, don't forget Nottingham had a huge head start because they had a lot of EU funding. But that brings me to my main point, it's this silo thinking. At the moment, we still work in departments, housing department, EU protect your budget, you know, sort of other departments protect their budget. We know that there is sort of, there's overlaps between different sectors, like sort of the construction, like housing. It became apparent from our last meeting that housing hadn't been speaking to construction. And you said that you would get together, I've forgotten who the speakers were, because I'm so bad with names, you know, at the time, to actually discuss what you had been doing, and you were going to sort of get together a bit better than this. Now, so that was an example of silo thinking, the damage, the time waste, the money wasted, when departments don't speak to each other. The one thing that Nottingham had was a sector which worked with the different departments. I don't know what would work in Sheffield, but until we actually alter the way that the budgets are allocated and the knowledge that we do need to allow some movement where there is sort of, whether it's sort of mutual sort of interests, if you like, then it's going, anything that we propose is going to be incredibly difficult. And I do worry about the silo thinking. The times I have been told, oh, sort of lessons will be learnt because A, didn't know what B was doing, you know, the way the criteria are set up so that, I mean, I say criteria, you know, sort of departments will say, this is your job, this is what you do, another department has the same thing. And you don't necessarily know what the departments are working to, let alone sort of what the overlap is. And I think the one thing that I really would like to see is an actual change in the whole culture, this department setup, and the budgeting system, which would allow movements that would allow us to move forward. And again, this came into funding. So that's, if you like, the first plea, look at how we are structured as a council. And the second thing is, aligned with all this sort of retrofitting, because the demand for electricity supply is going to be huge for all sorts of reasons, not just for retrofitting, not just for smart meters, not just for heat pumps, nor the rest of it, we should also be looking at the same time, sort of, you know, sort of securing a local supply, because the national grid might be able to cope, but we know that's not where the problems tend to lie, you know. And we've got to be looking at other things alongside sort of retrofitting, you know. So, really, I think I better stop there. But they're the two main points. It's not, you can't just do it in isolation, and this is where the silo thinking actually counteracts what we're trying to achieve as a council, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Some quite all-embracing, I think these ones were specifically for you, Tom, maybe, I'm looking at you. Not that you're responsible for Northern Power and its success otherwise. But yeah, getting outside the silo thinking and local power. Wax libical, go for it.
Okay, I'll give it a go. In terms of silo approaches, I think any kind of significant-sized organisation, there's always those risks, aren't there? And, you know, I'm not here saying that the City Council isn't a large organisation and there aren't those risks that occasionally get realised. I think one of the things around this agenda is that we are, as part of the 10-point plan, really kind of accepting the kind of cross-cutting nature of this challenge, and the need to embed action across the council as fully as possible. And I think that is a very clear and very strong commitment from the 10-point plan that's going to be considered at next week's cooperative executive meeting. And certainly in terms of the work that Mark and Laura and the team are now involved in, it looks both ways. So, because we now have a greater capacity around climate change and sustainability, neither should they be seen as the silo that does it all. They have to be seen and working with, as Laura's mentioned, working with housing colleagues to really do that embedding and that supportive collaborative approach. And it needs time, and it needs resource. So we are making progress there, but clearly there's more to do. Making sure that the decisions we take, and not just the final decisions or recommendations from officers to members in future committee structures, or where we're structured at the moment, is, you know, equally as important. We are embedding process and making some of those changes and rolling out training to support that, so that the culture of the organisation really accepts and addresses what we need to do in the future and the changes that we need to make. So I think we are certainly moving, and over the last 12 months have made really significant steps there in a positive direction. And absolutely, this can't be seen in silo from a kind of a climate change responsibility from within a team of the organisation, it has to work across. And as part of the decision-making processes and checks on projects from early inception stage and influencing policy and strategy right through to delivery, that's the change that we need to make.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think sort of what bothered me was sort of the assumption that, well, the comments, that it was the housing budget was going to fund all of this. And I'm thinking, oh, does housing happy with that? You know, because there's a lot more to it than that.
Yeah, okay. So, that does come onto another element here that I think we could maybe explore, and I'm not sure, I'm throwing this out here. Certainly, there are a lot of approaches, and the council will have to take a lead in this, because if we're not tackling climate change, then why can we expect our populace to tackle it? However, what is there within the plans already, and maybe, again, this comes back to the work being done with RLB, in terms of a local government trading company or otherwise, that will make sure that any investments and any gain shares that are made from retrofitting are realised by the council and the tenants that may help drive some of these changes that we need to see? Is that part of the decision-making at the moment? And if so, maybe, I'm just throwing this out here, I'm looking around nervously to see what everyone thinks on this, is this part of our considerations and is this somewhere that we should be going? Jill and Laura on the hotspot there.
I was just going to clarify what is in the RLB commission, because you mentioned something else earlier on that I thought was just, which was around, are they looking at skills and capacity? They're not looking at that. It's very much about the stock, the types of dwellings, what could we do to the homes. They are going to tell us, they're going to give us, I suppose, two different approaches really, is going back to the broad and deep conversations, what could you do in terms of deep retrofit, and what could you do in terms of maybe more broad or incremental. So it's very, very asset property based. But one of the conversations I had with RLB right at the beginning was, what is your driver? Is your driver carbon, or is your driver sort of more fuel poverty type issues? And we've said, we want to look at all, we don't want to exclude, we don't want to say it's just that one, that we want to see this in its rounded fashion. So it's very property, so it wouldn't pick up on the last point that you've made, Mark, around, looking at wider arrangements. I think that probably needs a slightly different conversation. Well, we need a conversation about what else is it we might wish to commission as a council in order to get to that point, if you want to say anything.
And just in relation to, speaking of like commercial enterprise within the council that can support this sort of work, I would see our role as being helping other organisations to set up those sort of enterprises. So for example, People Powered retrofit and the Carbon Co-op were very much supported in being set up by the councils. But it does depend on our own risk appetite, of which at this point, I'm not clear on personally, unfortunately.
Tom?
I think that's part of the further work that needs to be done, in terms of kind of those investment propositions, and kind of the way in which kind of investment's going to be financed and funded. There's clearly going to be kind of a different range of opportunities, that either external funding grants that we would want to probably inevitably have to bid for competitively to secure through to kind of investment choices that we would want to take as a local authority. So there'll be a spectrum there in terms of, you know, the upfront financing and funding, certainly in terms of that almost circular income capture to kind of continue that investment, as has already been mentioned today, as part of that decision-making process.
Thanks, Tom. I was going to, Barbara, does that cover off your points, because I sort of digressed as well?
Yes, I think so, because otherwise I'll go off on a tangent. Thank you.
All right, Doug, I'm going to bring Diane in after you. She'll give you a brief, please.
Yeah, just briefly, I was just reflecting on, in what capacity we're having these discussions. And actually, in terms of the large scale retrofitting, we're talking about largely in our capacity as landlord and property owner, so it gives us a huge opportunity. The fact that we sort of want to do it because it's a political commitment, with the 10-point plan, everything that is, is almost secondary, because, you know, what we're actually proposing to do, as opposed to the overall aims of my work, what we're proposing to do is based on us as property owners. But in terms of skills, and just think about the Manchester retrofitting guys who are doing it, I mean, you know, that's much more focused on a sort of skills development type thing. I don't know if Paul wants to add anything to this, but that's where we might be looking at it being through the region as pioneering some of those, you know, skills development issues that will sort of go in parallel. But it doesn't take away from anything that we do as landlords.
Thank you, Doug. Diane, you've been waiting very patiently. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope I can remember everything I want to say now. I've made a few notes. Very much what Chris said chimes with what some of my concerns are. I was really happy to hear what you were saying, Jill, about customer engagement and really getting to grips with that, because we've all seen, haven't we, in the past schemes whereby, I know I've been around long enough to see schemes where we'd got some money to do some improvements prior to decent homes, and tenants and residents associations said, oh no, us first, us first. And we ended up with half a dozen streets getting the full monte, and the rest of the estate, the thousands of houses that were on there, being untouched because the money had gone and been left, being consigned to live with the metal windows and the condensation and the damp and the inadequate heating. And, you know, we just blew it because we invested everything, we put all our eggs into one basket because of strong pressure groups. And I'm also concerned about, we're in a very much different position now than we were. I'm concerned about the use of the housing revenue accounts, because we will still have people living in council homes that we have a responsibility to keep in decent repair, at the same time as we're rolling out either a broad incremental approach to, you know, retrofitting, or a deep intensive narrow one. Because we still have to, you know, we know that tenants can wreck a property and cost us an awful lot of money when they leave and they move on. But we also know that when we've upgraded a property, we're still at risk of right to buy and losing the best of the stock and us ending up with the worst, and continually having to bring that up from the absolute worst that it can be to the best, and reinvest and reinvest and reinvest. So it's, there are lots of concerns out there. And going back to the customer engagement, but not just our customers, how we engage more widely in partnerships, because, yes, a private landlord said a lot of things that I've given a lot of thought to over the intervening time period, but the same can be true. On our estates at the moment, we're having roofing work done. And you know, driving through those estates, how many properties have been sold off, because it's how few the bright new red tiles are, and how many the gaps are, that is really worrying. And so there will be people there who've bought their homes and who've passed them on, either because they've sold them or moved on themselves, or they've died and they've been inherited and let out. And some of those people will have money to invest and the ability to invest and the willingness to invest, and some of them will still be the older, less catch rich, frightened of change, unable to take decisions and, you know, clear out their own loft, or take the decision to, well, yes, I can borrow against my house because it's going to be, it's going to be warmer at the end of this. So in a lot of ways, a lot of how we can move forward depends on how successful we are at attracting grant funding to support that kind of initiative. I think, you know, lots of these concerns, and I guess these are running through everybody's heads at the moment. I'd like to see that risk analysis, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see in future the balance between what we're going to do, between making sure everybody has a decent level of comfort, to an intense, deep approach to the few. Because we know where the impact would be, but can we afford that impact at the expense of everybody? Because it's not only climate change that we're looking to, it's the social justice aspect as well, isn't it? And some of the people that cannot afford to bring about these changes themselves may need our assistance and help. So I think, you know, directed towards housing and looking forward to the approach that they're taking and knowing about that. But looking for more information to be brought back to us as it becomes apparent what approaches we can take and what money is maybe available to us. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Diane. If ever could before handing over to Jill and Laura probably on this one. Anecdotally, one of the things that came to my mind recently was part of that roofing work, I think, that was being done out in Baton Ward, I think it was. I don't know why they called me, but I'm glad that they did. The gentleman that called me said that he'd been out, that there were tiles strewn all over the estate was his description. From the way you're nodding, it kind of looks like a description that you would recognise. He was also suggesting that maybe people were borrowing tiles for their own roofing improvements from our stock that was left unsecured in the streets. But also suggesting that some of the contractors that were doing some of this work were being approached to fit houses. Now, anecdotally, I don't know whether I picked this up wrong, I got the feeling that in places like that where we are doing works, we will potentially allow other people to buy into that service as it's going along. Is that right? And how do we make sure that, because that's kind of what we're doing with the mosaic of the right-to-buy issues that we've got here, we'd be asking people to buy into some of our retrofitting. So Jill?
We have investigated the issues around whether there's theft going on. There is no evidence of that, Mark. So the way we procure our contracts at the moment is specifically for, obviously, the homes that are within our ownership. And it's something Dan has asked me to look at, because we sometimes get inquiries about, couldn't they do it for me? I'd really like them to do it. So what we will advise is that this is a specification that we're using, but your conversation with the contractor is one you need to take up yourself. So we don't go out there promoting it specifically, but if we're asked about it, we do direct them to who they need to speak to in terms of the contractor. Obviously, if we wanted to take a different approach, we'd just need to procure it slightly differently and say that that's what we were going to do. So those are local agreements, so they will locally agree a price and all of those things at the moment. If we wanted to do something different, we can certainly look at that. But I think what our legal colleagues will want us to do is to make sure that we are clear about the risks that the council itself will be taking on by a private sector owner utilising our contract. It's not impossible to, but it's just trying to make sure that we're not open to too much perhaps financial or legal, you know, legal challenges around that. So we can do it, but it's almost quite informal. If we wanted to do something different, we can certainly look at that moving forward.
I would, oh, sorry. Go on. No, you're right. I would just add to that. So we did hear from Wayne Bexton at the last session, that this is something that Nottingham are actually starting to look at, where they have a programme of works and they are approaching private homeowners within that with a best possible offer. That they have set up that piece of work, that project, with all the right procurement contracts to allow them to do that. So that private homeowner, if they want to, can actually then go, yeah, you know what, actually involve me. And they've set that up. So I think as Jill's identified, it's looking at the procurement routes that we've got in place, and how we manage the risk of that. But that is something that other local authorities are looking at in terms of how they can start to bring in private homeowners or other homeowners into the projects that they're already running. So they would certainly be interesting projects for us to be watching and seeing how those actually play out in reality.
Thank you, Laura. Chris, did you want to come in there?
Yeah, just that issue with Hackenshoop and the tiles. Apparently, my understanding is that there is a secure compound for the materials. However, it was just before we had one of the big storms, the workers had secured everything and gone, a delivery wagon came, and instead of taking the stuff back, dropped it off outside the compound. It then got disturbed by the wind, and people were helping themselves to assist that they didn't get spread all over the place. But it caused a lot of confusion. And really, the delivery drivers should have taken the stuff back to the depot and didn't, just hold it up your hand and drop it off and then went. That's my understanding of it. Anyway, cheers.
Cheers, Chris. As I wasn't familiar with the site particularly, I was struggling. But there is something, I think we missed out on Diane's second point, which was the report on how we make sure that ongoing maintenance, such as kitchens and bathrooms, is not in some or any way form sacrificed to external fabric work that may otherwise be needed.
I think that's why I mentioned earlier on, is when we do that investment planning review, which will then be in that quarter three, where we bring everything to the table with members to say, this is the learning from the roadmap, and these are some of the things we could do. But there are still these things that you've previously said to us you want us to continue, then there's the balance there about what are the priorities. We are, we've just gone into contracts for the next five years to kitchens and bathrooms. So we'd be breached of contract if we stop that. So hopefully, you'll see that continuation, Diane, that we are, and very much we are picking up the legacy of the decent homes programme through that, those people that refused to have those works. So we are still dealing with that, and we'll continue to do so. But obviously, we're looking further than just the next five years. We're, you know, we are looking at least probably 10 years in terms of a plan for us, I think. So it's what obviously we want to do over the next 10 years, not just what we've currently got in place. So a prioritisation process will no doubt happen, and we'll have some interesting discussions, I think. One of the things, I also just wanted to mention at an earlier point was, we are bringing forward a report around EcoFlex, which is where the council makes a statement about what its priorities are going to be, which will enable more funding to come into the city. Governments were expected to move with the next phase of that, and I think the springtime then looks as though it might be delayed. Also looks as though there might be quite specific in the criteria that local authorities will need to adapt, but there will be some flexibility, that's what the flex, for us to determine locally what we think the priorities are for the city and who would most benefit. I think that will help with some of your policy discussions around where and what, and what's the most important for the city. It doesn't solve the whole picture, but I think it will, you know, in the next probably two to three, it might need to come, you know, after the elections. But I think you're going to start to have a specific piece of work in front of you that will, you know, those discussions will help pull out what are the priorities of the city, and then help with that sort of strategic thinking.
Diane, does that cover mostly?
Absolutely. A lot of it was just questions that I wanted to feed into the process, but I know Jill would be thinking about them anyway, so thank you.
So there is a supplementary element that popped into my mind just then, is where we have replaced or renewed kitchens and bathrooms, that then means that a right-to-buy value, expectation on that property would then increase, because they would be expected to pay some element of compensation for that investment from the HRA to do that. I'm assuming that also the retrofitting external cladding would be reflected in that same approach.
Yeah, payback periods, and, not payback periods, sorry, but cost thresholds. So any investment that's being done within the last five years, they don't get, you know, we have to be able to recover some of that cost.
So the only other element then that thinks in terms of the risk element and the cost envelope that we need to work on, where the retrofitting repairs are to last for 30 years, but we can't realise that investment through that right-to-buy clawback mechanism there, that risk element needs to be fed in, I guess, to the HRA budget element, and part of the report that will come back to the subsequent committee. But also, an understanding that some existing tenants may be reluctant, an additional reluctance to allow the retrofitting to go ahead because they don't want to necessarily have to pay more for the house that they're considering the right-to-buy option for now. So I'm not sure how we build that into our conversations, but we may want to look at that in some form, I suspect. Yeah, I don't know whether you want to expand on any of those ramblings from me there.
At the moment, but you're right, we do need to. It's almost looking at all the different scenarios and the customer profiles and working, you know, the risks and issues that goes, and then having a strategy of how, strategy and possibly some policy decisions on how we deal with all of those. And what, also perhaps in terms of right-to-buy legislation, where that can help, help or hinder us. You know, what we must do, what we could possibly do, but might need a policy decision on it. So, yes, we certainly will look at that. Right-to-buy numbers are going up considerably at the moment as well.
Okay, so just to make a complex topography even more complex. So we've pretty much asked all the questions that we need to at the moment. Barbara, coming in there.
Yeah, just one more, and it was something I touched on earlier. Sort of, I mean, all these retrofitted properties, regardless of how it's been done, they all externally, they all rely on the fact that you don't break the thermal barrier to have a conduct through from the external to the internal. I mean, have you had any feedback about sort of this being an issue anywhere? Because, I mean, usually takes a few years for it to come through. And this is what I was saying about, you know, people like alterations, like hanging baskets outside, sort of, you know, attaching certain things to the external wall. I mean, sort of, would it be that you would then have to put in all sorts of restrictions on a house that has been sort of externally cladded or retrofitted?
I certainly think it will make us revisit. We have a permissions policy procedure, so in theory, people should have permission to do certain things. They don't always. But it certainly is starting to come through as a consideration for us in terms of what we wouldn't give permission for. Or what we would need to do is to put additional checks, site survey checks in place to make sure it's been done to the right standards, so that, as you said, the thermal barriers are not being breached. So it will increase the complexity perhaps for some of the residents who might be getting, I don't know, a local builder in to do some of that work for them. And we'll, you know, it's about how much we can give them a package of good quality information upon which how to do some of these things well, and not create a problem for us. I think, just a slight, I've not had any specific complaints from people around that. But one of the biggest challenges we've got on the next scheme of external wall insulation that we're progressing with is the number of conservatories, outbuildings and such that have been attached without permission to homes, where it will make it incredibly difficult without us actually telling somebody that we need you to take that down to actually do the retrofit. I've probably got about 20%, I think it's about 20%, 20% of the homes on the next phase have some sort of attachment that is making the whole design and implementation of that package incredibly difficult. And I think that's one of the ones that we might, it goes back to the issue about people refusing, because if that's what we're saying to them, you're going, the only way we can do this is if we take that down. And then where does the liability, you know, lie in terms of, because I would imagine some people will want them reinstated and the additional costs associated with that and such like. So it'll need quite a bit of negotiation, I think.
Reassurances, it's in your planning already. Thank you.
And yeah, I'm kind of mindful of a particular house on my patch that had put an external toilet in their back garden without asking us, and having put a conservatory on as well, so that's not helpful. So if we move on to the recommendation element, because obviously you have been scribbling away quite rapidly there, Mark, Jill, Laura and Tom, taking lots of notes. So I'm guessing you've captured some of the feel for what's coming from the committee. In terms of the seven key themes, could I just get a bit of clarification? Is the ranking one to seven a weighted ranking, or are they all equally important?
Just the way that they're ordered is the first two items were specifically brought by officers as a request from, at the last session, to have some steer and recommendation on. So that is around clarifying our approach to funding, and the regional approach, and how we can improve regional relationships to allow us to have more regional bids, which are much more likely to be successful. After that, there's no particular order, but number seven, the building skills, is an area that there is a lot more work already going on. So that was put a little closer to the bottom.
Okay, so does that help everybody in understanding the recommendations here as they are? Yeah. So are we mostly content with this approach? Or, well, is anyone objecting to us pushing for greater working locally, regionally, across South Yorkshire footprint and possibly beyond? And clarifying that we do want officers to have the capacity and scope to start establishing those bids going forward? I can't imagine, yeah, nobody's saying no, Barbara?
The only comment I can make is sort of, there's been a lot of talk about engagement, and I suppose I prefer to see that three as opposed to four, because to me, that is critical.
Doug?
I mean, and just based on Laura's point, I can see the sense in how it's been written, but actually, I think we're saying, if these are the key themes, they're all critical elements. And I think that the right theme is, to endorse them as a whole, but they're not, but maybe we should be explicit that it's actually not an order of priority, that they're all key elements, each have their own standing. So that we don't read too much into it, that, you know, four is more, four is less important than three or anything like that. Yeah, that's right.
Like everything, it's people's perceptions. And if we've got it ranked in a list, then sort of, you know, again, you said why seven is at the bottom, because a lot of work's been done on that. Therefore, sort of, people tend to sort of read the first half and maybe not quite absorb the rest of it. That's all.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this was more for focusing your time in terms of which bits perhaps need a little bit more time talking about. But I can certainly reorder them if that's what the committee would like.
Well, I think my proposal is actually where we're explicit that one doesn't have undue significance above the others, even though in practice, so that they will all have an equal and independent footing.
If we could have an A5, A5 piece of paper, more ranked equally across the top, that would be ideal. But the A4 format does not facilitate that. Picking up on what Barbara highlighted, and given as it is, it is something about maybe reinforcing the wording of element four for the engagement, because the engagement can occur at different levels, both within the council tenancies and also the citywide tenancies and occupancies. So it's whether we need to reinforce that engagement, because that was one of the earlier suggestions, was that we'd focus potentially on some of our housing stock, and accelerate those conversations with tenants about retrofitting. So it's whether we do something to reinforce element four, to talk about perceived and actual barriers, and start to understand them a bit better. Because certainly, it shouldn't necessarily get in the way of the compiling of bids for government. And we've already, as a committee, expressed our concern, well, will be expressing our concerns with government, at the way that the bidding process Um, and, and we've already as a committee expressed our concern, well, will be expressing our concerns with government at the way that the bidding process is, i- i- is currently implemented. Because of the turnaround times and the erratic nature of them often. Um, and because we're not on the inside track, we won't get the advance notice, um, as often happens with these bidding approaches. So, um, yeah, maybe something around that element of four. Is there anything else that on there that anyone needs, feels needs beefing up? No? So I think in terms of, in terms of us for the committee, the seven points are, are for the most part fine. Given that no point is more important than any other. Um, that almost feels like I'm broaching on Monty Python. Sorry, wording there. Um, the key themes identified are largely correct. Um, I, I think that is coming across in the conversation today. Um, and hopefully that will provide you guys with the next bit that you need to go to the cooperative executive. I'm looking at you, Mark, for that now.
Uh, well, just, um, one of the decisions we had outside the meeting was, I don't know if I'm putting Alice on the spot a bit here, but it was about Alice helping to pull together some of the conversations we've had today. So in other words, there's been a lot of points that have been raised, which I think we're anticipating will then help form the basis of this report. There's clearly the seven points we've gone through now and refined those. But I think if, um, if it works with, with the chair and with the rest of the committee, then I think there was a, an opportunity for Alice to help pull together some of that report with obviously the help of, of Laura and Housing Service. To then circulate that around the committee in terms of that final report with those recommendations. So just to reinforce, I mean, obviously there isn't in the timetable. I know this isn't, this is the last date that we had for the transitional committee to meet, which is why we've had to try and shoehorn the, the three hearings into a short period. But then we've got something which we can take away from this in terms of a, a, a summary and a collection of all the information on the key recommendations, which can then, um, as that point says, go on to the committee or the, the other committees where it's got a, a home in a sense to say this is what we've, what, what this committee has deliberated and what it's recommended we take forward post, um, post May.
Thank you for that, Mark. I, I think there's broad consensus that that is what we'd want. I'm looking at Philippa, Laura and, uh, Alice and thinking as a bloke, I don't want to be telling women what to be doing. It's not a good look. So I'll hand over to you guys.
No, if I can. It's all right. Laura and I have had the conversation. Um, and I think it makes sense to do a bit of a collaborative summary of, of, um, everything that's going, you know, what's happened, what's come out today and making sure that report fits the needs of this committee as well. So yeah, I, I think for me, I'm slightly thinking, when's the webcast go up, Claire? Yeah. So, and Laura and I do have, um, some time in the diary already, but we probably need more. And I'll take it that we will, I will then make sure it gets circulated around the whole of the committee. So no, it's all right. I haven't been stitched up entirely, but.
And I'm absolved of any guilt, uh, from, from that ask. So wonderful. I think we're both free. Paul?
Thanks, Mark. I just, can I just raise, I just don't know if, um, the urgency is, comes out clearly enough from this. And I know in the last line of what the committee's been asked to do says, actions to continue, improve and accelerate activity. And I, and I was just, I, I waited till the end because I've just been mulling it over. So I'm really raising it for, for your thoughts and others. Um, you know, the urgency is paramount. And I just wonder if that's a strong enough statement and considering that, that, you know, we, we're potentially going to have obstacles from residents, political obstacles, obstacles from our partners, perhaps even from the city reg-, you know, the various potential obstacles to that line. And I just wondered if we can put something in just that makes clear how, uh, you know, urgency is, is, is a, is paramount concern and we can't allow people to put blockages in our way.
Yeah, like, like Paul, uh, my mind was, I, I'm glad to see the improve and accelerate activity line. How, how we can strengthen that to, um, ensure that the, the clock is ticking and that it's getting increasingly louder. I'm not entirely sure on at the moment here. Um, but I think, I think we could do that. Doug, did you want to come in there?
Just a line to recognise the urgency.
That's a relatively easy fix. Uh, um, and, and a point that we all recognise the urgency of, of pushing this agenda forward. Um, at the early, uh, uh, every given opportunity, I think as well, to ensure that every given opportunity is, um, embraced. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Laura. And, uh, thank you to Tom, who had to leave early. Um, but his contributions were much appreciated as always. And thank you, Doug, for bringing the officers along today and, and bringing this to what is our last transitional committee. Thank you. Doug?
Definitely thanks to the officers and thanks for bang on time.
Not quite. We've got the final moment of just reflecting on the, what we've achieved this year. And I think it'd be remiss of me not to actually thank everybody in the room for the one significant thing which we've done, which is getting the local plan on track in a way that means it can no longer, hopefully, be derailed and delayed in any way, form whatsoever. Um, so even though we have been a transitional advisory body, I think that we have actually achieved quite a lot. Chris?
I'd like to thank your chair in share, uh, chair. You've, you've chaired it absolutely brilliantly this year with the support of Barbara. Um, I've got to say, it's been quite enjoyable being on this particular thing. Um, it's even more enjoyable than it's my last one. Um, but I will say this, Chair, I, I think as a, just a parting shot on this particular thing for the group that come afterwards. Be bold, be brave, listen to the silent majority as much as you do the vocal minority. Because sometimes they get missed and things aren't always what the, the minority think they are. So I wish whoever takes over this incarnation in future, the best of luck and I will be following it with interest.
Thank, thank you, Chris. And I'll try and not blush too much, but thank you. Thank you to everybody for their, 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 uh, cooperation in this. Thank you. And that's, and especially Alice for supporting us and all the other officers for making sure that I, I turn up in the right place at the right time, which I haven't always done. But thank you, everybody, and, and goodbye. Um, thank you.